All right, it is seven o'clock, so we will call to order the special.
Oh, chief, good, okay.
Okay, we're calling to order the special meeting of March 19th, 2020, for the Trinity County Planning Commission. First off, I'd like to see if we can make contact with Diana Stewart and Mike McHugh via teleconference. Are you there, Diana?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. And Mike, are you online?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
All right, sounds good. To start off, we're gonna have Darrow Forsland go through the teleconferencing information and the live feed, so members of the public can join in via teleconference.
I'm actually sending the code right now to somebody, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that the, that this meeting is on YouTube live feed right now. And in case they're watching that and don't know the caller number, in order to contact the board and talk about the issue, they need to call in the conference, on the conference line, which is 800-867-2581, and the code is 623-1382. And if you get in on that, then let us know you're there, so that we can be sure to call in, if you need to talk, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I guess to start with, we will go ahead and take public comment on matters that are not listed on the agenda, that are within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. And this will be limited to three minutes. Starting out, we do have a couple of members of the public that are present at the meeting, so we will take those first. And if anyone's on the phone, let us know, so we can call on you in a moment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Liz McIntosh from Junction City. I would love to have come on your, the 26th meeting. Has Kim had asked us to maybe come, then it would be better time, but I don't know if you'll have a meeting, so I'm grateful you're here, and I'm coming in place of a dear friend of mine, Amanda Brown, and many other community members. We chose not to blast out to our community to please come tonight, just, you know, because of COVID-19 and all this, this crazy. So I'm here to plant a seed. I haven't been before you for probably nine months or so, and I'm here again for the same topic, the Smith Pit Mining Operation in Junction City, right down the street from the Junction City Elementary School on Red Hill Road. And I have to first off really thank you very, very much, because the last time that I came before you, you had Director, or directed Director Tippett at the time to respond to the request that I had of him at that time, as we were watching Caltrans trucks come in over and over again. In May of 2018, I believe, we had notification that they were going to amend their permit, which was really just a scoop and haul operation from 1997. That's all they were supposed to do, was take tailing piles left behind from the gold era out, and return this area to an open space use. And then we had the big French Creek slide, and now, then we saw another operation that started at this time, after being aware that there was a new permit, which triggered us to come and ask you to please direct them. And they talked to us, and we found out, sure enough, they did not have permits to be bringing in materials from Caltrans. The original project from 97 was to remove something around, and the ballpark I'm giving is like 330,000 cubic yards, and at this point, they've brought in over 500,000 cubic yards. They are in violation on so many levels of this, this use permit, and we've been waiting patiently for them to come forward on their own, but the permit is complicated, and it has been amended even since we first saw it. So our community is at a place where we would really like you to exercise your right and obligation under ordinance number 315, section 32 of your, or use permits, to bring this before you, to have a hearing for modification or revocation. We know that our planning director is able to bring this forward on her own, but it would be better if you had members of the public coming to you and letting you know, this is an absolute nuisance. I don't speak for the school, but I work full-time, I work more than full-time, I sit in the front office, I watch them speed past us and not observe the speed limits. I watch them coming in at 6:45 a.m., and I've seen them coming in with full loads, not recently, but it just, I could list you off, this is my file, all right? This is what I have, and I don't even have the USB with public record requests. Please bring it forward, please agendize this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
It works.
Good evening, Commissioner. Justin Hawkins from Haverford. Couple things. Thanks for having the meeting tonight, I appreciate everyone showing up. And while it's generally kind of about the Housing Element Update, I think if you've read the Housing Element Update, you might notice that it kind of lacks a few things that might be important or relevant to our county. Kind of reminds me of like a template operation, where, where it pretty much just reads like someone wrote it from out of the county, maybe even showed up here. And there's some important information that is missing, but what it kind of suggests to me is that we really need some sort of stakeholder committee to help guide the general plan update. Because if this is what we're going to be seeing, and it suggests we're gonna get this done in a couple of years, all the way through, we've gotta have more help. And I'd love to help, I'm a stakeholder in the sense that I paid thousands of dollars in fees into the update, and I, there's other people who really want to help, and we have a lot of knowledge in this county, that could really make this more useful even today. Now, we'll get another shot at the housing element, I'm sure, but there's a lot of opportunity that we're missing, so I urge the Commission, and the Director, and anybody else who would be willing to get a stakeholder committee going for the general plan update, that'd be wonderful. And then, while I still have a few moments, I just wanted to let the Commission know that the Board of Supervisors approved some modifications to the cannabis EIR, and supposedly we're gonna have a beneficial impacts, if you will, if you wanna call them impacts, but beneficial aspects of our program, a chapter on that. And this is something that I've talked about, but it's been overlooked, I think, in the analysis of the EIR, is that a large percentage of our fees go to code enforcement efforts in Trinity County. And that's to clean up, the cumulative impacts from cultivation of the whole county. And we've never made a big deal out of it, there's some questions as to the legality of that process, but make no doubt that we're helping to clean up my neighbor's mess. I, you know, I'd love to have my neighbor's mess cleaned up, but of course, you can't tell your neighbors what to do, I mean, kind of all know that, but there's no doubt that those environmental commitments, those fees, have gone a long way towards reducing cumulative impacts in this county from cultivation, to the point where I don't think there's any cumulative impacts from our licenses at this point. And I would hope that the Commission consider that point when it comes time for the final EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Couple of technical comments. Basically, there's a lag between the video and the, because we're on two different kinds of systems, so the phone people, the video is about 10 seconds behind the phone, so you need to give them a little bit of time if they're dealing. The other is that I think the only mic that's on that phone system is sitting up by you, and the people online, board members online, are having a hard time hearing this microphone, so that's why I try to get them to get a look closer, so we make, make sure that people are talking loud enough that it's running through the speakers, and that, that mic will pick it up. These kinds of systems can have additional mics on, and so if they continue to have this kind of meetings, we oughta get a mic and put it up here for people, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with-
I have a question, is this the only time to speak for the housing element?
No, this is for items that are not the housing element.
Understand, thanks.
Is there-
I'm on the phone.
Yes, and do you have a public comment that's not housing element?
Hello?
Yes.
Are you-
Can I have you on the phone?
Yes, I am, are you-
Oh, this is Veronica Kelly Albies from Dedwood City.
Yes.
I just want to kind of back up what Liz was, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm gonna step away from the video, since it's live. I just wanna reiterate that it would be a good opportunity right now to take a look at enforcement of CUPs throughout the county. I know the one in Junction City has been a major issue, and I know that there are others, and through the process over the last couple of years, dealing with enforcement and trying to help create a better environment for all of us, it's become very confusing, and it also seems to lack the actual enforcement. So I just wanna suggest that you do agendize serious issues, as well as take a look at the process of enforcement for the community to participate in. And thank you for having this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, are there any others on the phone who wish to comment in the public comment period? All right, hearing none, I think we can close public comment, and we will move on to item number one, and our only item on the agenda tonight, the General Plan Amendment for the 2019 through 2024 Housing Element, DEV-20-01.
Good evening, Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director of the giving, can folks hear me on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll be giving the presentation this evening on the project, which is the 2019-2024 Housing Element Update for the General Plan. The purpose of general plans, or the housing element, is, is, the law, is based on a law enacted by the state legislature. The goal of the housing element is to provide adequate, safe, and affordable housing for every Californian, and through the attainment of housing, which requires cooperation of local and state governments. Housing element law requires that local governments adequately plan to meet their existing projected housing needs, including their share of the regional housing needs. Housing element law is located in government code, and is very prescribed. In order, unlike, I'm sorry, it's kind of odd situation here, I'll get in the groove. Unlike other mandatory elements, the general plan, and I listened to Mr. Hawkins' comments earlier, that housing element is quite different from the other six elements of the general plan. First of all, the housing element is the only element that is required to be updated by state law. Other elements are recommended, such as the safety, conservation, land use noise, those, those are recommended to be updated, but the housing element must be updated, and if it's not updated, there are, especially in the last few years, severe consequences. So Trinity County is on a five-year cycle, some counties are on eight, depending on which path they took. There was a law a few years back that offered some jurisdictions to go with eight-year cycles. Trinity remains on the five-year cycle, so yes, you will see the housing element again, and the five years actually passes quite quickly, to be honest. So the next housing element will be due in 2024. The current housing element, which was the 2014 to 2019 Housing Element, expired in August of, August 31st. This left a gap, and because the housing element is required by state law, the trend has been for grant funding to hinge, you know, the grant funding sources on a compliant housing element. In fact, many items, various requirements are hinged on having a housing element, that's in compliance with state law. Currently, Trinity County has several grants worth millions of dollars that are depending on this document moving forward in a timely manner. The state's Housing Community Development Department has been working with us very closely. They want to see us get these funds. Among those funds is SB 2 grants, which would be providing $160,000 to our community to update our zoning ordinance, and look at rezoning some parcels to a higher density during the CEQA, implementing some of the programs that are in this document. That is very important, it's rare to have planning money, this is, so I'm very excited about that. So there are a lot hinges on this document, and having a compliant housing element. The bigger picture, of course, being housing, we know that's an issue, and so especially in the last couple of years with the housing crisis, and legislation coming out of Sacramento, Governor Newsom's direction, huge push for housing alternatives for every income, and more options, such as accessory dwelling units, and removing barriers to multifamily, affordable housing, affordable housing of any kind, not just multifamily. So that's been a big push. So the housing element, back to Mr. Hawkins' comments, is very prescribed, it's very, very much dictated by state law, more than any other element, and does, it does indeed come across as a very detached document, and, and that does make it, you know, somewhat challenging. Other elements of the general plan can very much, you know, can be tailored, they also have statutory requirements, but nothing compared to the housing element, it's very, very extreme. And I'd be happy to send housing, the housing element sections to anybody who is willing to read them, but I assure you, yes, very precise, and additional requirements are added constantly to address housing needs and, and the housing crisis in the state of California. You will, you do have in your packet, you received the staff report, a letter from Housing Community Development, the State Housing Community Development Department, that they have reviewed this, they expedited the review based on the need to get this housing element adopted as quickly as possible, and they have confirmed that this draft meets the statutory requirements. Is it exciting? No, but it meets the statutory requirements. So with that, I will just go through the document briefly, some highlights, and definitely after I complete my presentation, any areas you'd like to go back and discuss any further, I'd be happy to do that. So the document starts basically with, starting with chapter two, an overview of the housing situation, demographics, economic situation of the county. So you have several tables of population trends, housing trends, employment trends, basically laying the groundwork for the programs and, and the needs of the county, recognizing the needs of the county. Housing affordability is touched on, housing stock characteristics, you're looking at housing units by type, home sales prices, and special housing needs. Chapter three, go through my tabs here. Chapter three starts to get into the resources and constraints that are unique for housing, that are unique to Trinity County, and one of those, and this is a challenge for every rural county, is touched on on page 36, and that is, in rural counties, you, you tend not to have the infrastructure available to allow for a bit more dense housing development, and especially multifamily development, apartment complex, a two-story apartment complex, or a very high-dense development, that's not gonna work on the septic system. It could, with a lot of engineering expense, but again, affordable housing, you know, we're looking at affordable costs and development costs, and so you're looking at places with community water, community sewer, and in your rural county, you just don't have that in very many places, so you're, you are looking to the more developed areas in Trinity County, you know, Lewiston, Haverford, and we will have these services, some of these services available. Again, but do those services have capacity for additional growth? So that, that's an ongoing challenge for rural counties, and that's, that is, of course, And then you have zoning districts with certain allowances, where you can do higher-density development, and then you have also environmental constraints as well. Land use controls are also including government constraints, general plan zoning. But chapter three basically lays out, yeah, what's, what's, you know, what are barriers, recognizing those barriers, and how to move past those. On page 44, there's provisions for a variety of housing types, and that includes multifamily housing, accessory dwelling units, which is a very well-used housing option in the last couple of years in Trinity County, wonderful option. Mobile home and manufactured homes, and also farm labor housing are addressed in our The housing element also address extremely low-income housing, codes enforcement, and on and off-site improvement standards. As you get farther into chapter three, we start to go into building fees, so costs to build and develop are obviously a constraint, and those are continually increasing, the costs, due to building code changes. Recently, for example, you could look at the requirements to have solar or fire sprinklers, those are additional costs to housing. You also have higher standards going in regarding fire, wildfire, and of course, in California, in many areas, you have seismic requirements that come into play, do not apply in Trinity County as much as other, other places in the state, but that's an example. Also fees, and there is a review of our fees, both for building permit fees and any other fees that could come to play, if somebody wanted to build an affordable home for themselves, what those costs would look like. On 56, there's a discussion about some of those non-governmental constraints, I mean, you know, specifically environmental constraints on page 56. Like I said, geologic hazards, soil, sometimes, you know, you're building a house, you don't have community sewer, or wastewater treatment, and you have to go to a septic system, the area doesn't perk, you can, or it does perk, but you have to get it in your system, it's very expensive. So soils with low permeability rates, excessive slopes, quite a few of those in Trinity County, very applicable, water supply and quality, flood hazards and fire hazards. And then you get to land cost and construction costs as well, as I mentioned earlier. Another constraint on housing, availability of financing. And then on, we start chapter four, and that's, that chapter four is review and revise, is, that's the title. And one thing is, that comes into play with the housing elements, is when the planning cycle comes up, for the five-year planning cycle, in this case for us, which actually Housing Community Development, or HCD, calls the sixth planning cycle, that's what this, this is called, and you will see that mentioned. When that cycle comes up, HCD will issue each local jurisdiction in its own way, sometimes jurisdictions get a lump sum in an urban area where there's multi-jurisdictions, but it's called a regional housing needs allocation number, and, and RINA is what we call that, so it's R-H-N-A, RINA. And that, that RINA for Trinity County is, is actually very low compared to other, other counties, I believe, LA County has a 90,000 unit, RINA. This housing cycle, we only have two, and, but that is an important number, we need to show that we can meet two for low and very low units. Some counties have hundreds, we are dealing with two, but regardless of our RINA allotment being so, our allocation, excuse me, being so low, we all know there's a housing need in Trinity County, it's, it's very, it's very tough to find housing, and there are not many housing options, so I've heard, and I hear quite frequently, especially for folks coming to the area or needing to move and find a new place to live, that can be very challenging. So that is, regardless of the RINA being, I think, probably one of the lowest in the state, we definitely face housing challenges. So the review, the review and the revise is basically taking the programs from the last housing element, and, and saying, kind of, how did you do? What is the status of this program? And so this is a, you know, it breaks it down program by program, starting on page 64, of, you know, was that, was that program accomplished? Is it continued? Was it achieved? What happened? So this chapter goes through each one of the programs, and reports on how those went. And each one's a little different, but that's a summary of the last housing element progress. So then we get to chapter five, which are the programs proposed for the current housing cycle, the six cycle housing programs. And you have a housing goal, it's structured, so you have a housing goal, and then housing policies to support that goal, and objectives and programs to implement that goal. Having worked on a, a good number of housing elements, I've seen some housing elements in my experience that have a tremendous amount of, of programs, and I, I do, and often those are unachievable, and so I do wanna point out that these are, we have a good number of programs, they covered what's needed, we believe they're achievable, of course, we wouldn't have them in here if they weren't, but I think it's very tight programs, I think we're going in the right direction, not trying to overachieve, but just, you know, provide, you know, figure out ways to provide housing, and take care of the housing that we have in the county. I'm sure there'll be some specific questions on some of those programs later on, so I'll just keep moving. And then on page 85, we have our quantified objectives, it's table B-1, and that shows the RINA number, the regional housing needs allocation number, we need to, we need to provide, we need to show by the end of the planning cycle and the next housing element, that we have achieved construction of two new, two new units, one in the extremely low category, income category, and one in the very low category. So if you go onto page 86, you'll see, you'll see a two under new construction. There's also eight units in for rehabilitation, meaning existing homes that just need to, the conditions need to be improved, and to rehabilitate those homes, so two new construction, eight rehabilitation, and 319 units conservation and preservation. They may be at risk, we need to make sure those homes, that those homes are maintained, those housing units are maintained for our population, and those are in the very low Then we get to appendix one, that's the vacant land inventory. Again, and all these, all these items are part of state law, they must, they're prescribed in state law, they must be addressed in the housing element, for housing element compliance with state law. The vacant land inventory is definitely one of those items, and because our RINA is, is so low, the regional housing needs allocation is so low, with the units at two, our vacant lands inventory has, we have this list, unfortunately, it doesn't have a page number, but listing of all the parcels that could be developed with these units, and we need to make sure there's no, the site constraints, that they're actually feasible sites. We can't just say, oh, that's vacant, let's put it on the list. We actually have to show, now, now, in past years, like a decade ago, it wasn't a lot of checking on site constraints that you would look and say, okay, yes, this is a vacant parcel. It has the right zoning, let's put this on the list. That has been changed quite a bit in the last couple of years. And now a jurisdiction has to very much prove that this is a buildable site. It can be done and, and explain that. If there's any site constraints on the property that may limit development, those have to be identified or probably kick the property off the list. So much more scrutiny on the parcels that are put on this list now. And again, our RHA is two, and we have quite a few parcels where those two units could go. So we're in good shape there. We also have to provide maps that show where these parcels are located. And those are also included in its appendices. And in this case, we have Lewiston, Hayfork, and Weaverville. Those are the areas identified with the parcel on the list. And again, that also comes back to infrastructure availability. Then Appendix Two. This is a list of entities qualified to preserve at-risk units. And this is basically a resource list. If we do have units that are at risk of being lost, housing units being lost, then these are resources that can help with that situation and providing services to make sure those units are maintained. So that's my overview of the housing element. There was a resolution sent out to Planning Commissioners today, posted on the website. It was with a memo. There is a resolution. And again, as part of that resolution, the housing element update is considered a project under CEQA. And so in this case, we were able to do an addendum to the last housing element. Twenty sixteen, the housing element that was approved in twenty sixteen, that was the twenty fourteen, twenty nineteen housing element. And so since a negative declaration for CEQA was done for that document, there has not been that much change in the housing arena or the housing element that triggered new CEQA. So we were able to do an addendum to that document. So that is, of course, part, addresses CEQA. This is a project and is included in the actions recommended for approval with findings as, as normal with CEQA. Again, the housing element, it is a process required by state law. And one thing I did not mention is that it is a very public process. They, they make it very clear in state law, there needs to be a public outreach, comments from the public, meeting with housing proponents and, and services to make sure that everybody has input on this and, and we're armed-taught while keeping in compliance with state law. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Director Hunter. First off, from the commission, do we have any questions of staff before we open this up to public comment?
I do. In fact, it's just a question of clarification. On page thirty-two, under Assisted Housing Inventory, Trinity County, two thousand and eighteen. It says here on the page before that this is the section referring to at-risk housing units. And the first two, Weaver Creek Apartments and Weaver Creek Senior Apartments, it has an expiration date at the very end of two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. So are these, is this assisted housing, is that expired already? And I'm just confused because the paragraph before refers to ways to retain that housing from being expired. So I'm not sure, are these expired already, or is that a typo on the expiration dates? That's the only thing that struck me in terms of seeking clarity out of the document.
Wow, that is a great question. And I'm sorry, I do not have an answer, but that's a fantastic question. I had not noticed that. So I will, while we're getting public comment, I'll, I'll text some of my, my housing experts and see if I can get an answer on that, but yeah.
Before we open public comments, Commissioner McHugh, do you have any questions of staff?
I, no questions.
And Commissioner Stewart, do you?
Yeah, I asked, I said, prior to the meeting, so similar to Alex. I, my question involves the unpermitted dwellings that would benefit from Class K house, a Class K high floor unit. And there's no mention in this document, there's no mention, of course, dwellings at risk, but they don't mention specifically anything about the large number of unpermitted dwellings that are in Trinity County.
Yes, and that is correct. And, and I actually, Diana, thank you for sending that ahead of time because I did, I did forward that question to our consultant and also another staff member that had been working on this document to, to see about that. And first of all, comes back to, we're striving to meet state compliance and meet our RHA and address the state statute. And in that regard, unpermitted structures, we can't count towards the RHA. It's, it, it doesn't fall into our document as far as state compliance goes. Again, though, it's our document. So I did ask, you know, some questions about where, where would this be most appropriately addressed? And one potential area is Program four point one and four point two, where some language could be added. I believe Humboldt County has some mention of it in their housing elements about addressing unpermitted, actually, in their case, it's unpermitted mobile home parks. But language could be addressed that, you know, that we'd like to see. Again, we don't want to trigger a CEQA issue, but I felt that, you know, should the commission want to see some language regarding unpermitted structures, that it could be added to one of the programs to address that issue. That is a topic we currently do not have a program to bring unpermitted homes into compliance. Some, some jurisdiction will go with like a leniency or kind of a program to, to work with the homeowners to do that. We don't currently have that. Not to say it's not needed. We just, it's something we can work on. Again, housing money is coming, planning money's coming. And it could be, if it's an area of concern to the commission and the commission feels it should be added with the recommendation, we could make some changes there. Diana, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And given the fact that so many people, in my opinion, given the fact that so many people in, in the county, as well as on the commission, really are concerned with this issue and the fact that even getting insurance can be difficult. I think it's important that we address some of that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ward, yes?
Yes, I do want to piggyback on, on the comment made by Director Hunter and the Commissioner Stewart. There is currently no programs in the county that addresses this. However, I do want to make mention, and it doesn't need to be included. I just want to put it out for the record that, in fact, the cannabis ordinance has provided a great deal of push for many of these structures that are unpermitted in the county to come into compliance. And I know this first fact, as working locally, doing engineering work, that many clients have come and seek this assistance to bring their housing into compliance. And there, there's been dozens of these that, that have gone through this process to, you know, provide better living standards for, for those in, in need in these communities. So I just wanted to point that out.
If I may?
Yes.
Language that was added to the Humboldt County housing element. I said it would just address mobile home, unpermitted mobile home parks. There actually is some language here, and I'll read it real quick, just to be considered. Humboldt County has language saying if they establish an amnesty program, the Safe Homes Program for Unpermitted Residential Development, available to all homeowners in the unincorporated area. So it might be, like, for instance, a program, maybe Trinity County wants to live into something like an amnesty program, similar to this language from Humboldt. It's a step in the right direction, possibly, for an inspiration.
Hi, what's, uh, what's your name, Chris, is here?
Yes, go ahead.
Kim, on your last comment about an amnesty program, I'm not sure what amnesty allows. I don't understand the comment, what Humboldt allows. I think that, that, Commissioner Ward, by the comment, people are coming into compliance. If someone is not in compliance today and wants to come into compliance, it's like they still do that process. What is the amnesty provided?
It matters on, on the program. They can vary. You know, several counties have had different types of amnesty programs. So I am not sure at this time, Commissioner McHugh. But I, I do know of several counties that have implemented maybe lessening engineering requirements or different measures. It's a, it's a variety. And unfortunately, I did not have the time to look into what Humboldt County's program was. Also on that note, while some, some folks are, are, have the funds and the ability to bring a structure into compliance with building code, it is incredibly expensive. And not everybody can do that. There's a lot of folks out there that are not able to meet the requirements, the engineering requirements and, and the installation of fire sprinklers if they have to, put in fire sprinklers. So while there's some, there are many that are not able to afford that. And my building official would not be happy with that.
Any further questions, Commissioner McHugh?
Uh, thank you, sir.
Okay, well, then I guess we will open this item up to public comment. If there's anybody on the phone who would wish to comment on the housing element, you can do so now. And if there's somebody out there. If any of you in the audience would care to comment on the housing element, you can also do that at this time.
Good evening, my name is Dana Ryan. I live in Weaverville. And I'm a landlord and I develop. And I'm thankful you guys have this as a special meeting. It's, it's needed. And I'm hoping it'll take priority over, over the cannabis forbid.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm wondering if you could turn up the microphone and audio, it's very difficult to hear audio interference on the telephone.
Okay, we'll try to, we're trying to readjust the microphone to here a little bit. And please try to speak into your microphone.
Good evening, I'm Dana Ryan. I'm, I live in Weaverville, and I'm a landlord, and I develop as well. And I'm thankful that we're having this special meeting with Director Hunter being involved. I've asked if there could be an emergency type of a housing, so the special meeting seems like it's, it's part of it. And hopefully it prioritizes over the cannabis just for a little bit, so we can have housing. I've heard just this week, one of my last tenants have died under the Weaver Creek Bridge just this week, and we need housing. And if, if, as a special meeting, I realize it's special, but I've asked Ms. Hunter if there could be, you know, an emergency type of housing. I have just under five acres in town, and it's, it's ready. Utilities are, are set up. I don't care if I'm really the one that develops it. I would, I would like to in a way, but I've offered it as well to some other low-income developers tied into the system. I have it designed right now where we can put in sixty-plus tiny homes. And the last time I was, I brought up tiny homes, it wasn't, it wasn't taken very well. Like, they told me it wasn't, please don't talk about tiny homes. And I think it's time to talk about it. I have it designed, and I'm not saying that it's the answer, but it's, it's sixty homes. The water, sewer, electric, I've done my homework. And we're, we're ready, we're ready. The zoning's off. It's, it's flat, it's level. It's set between two R-three parcels with HRN and another apartment complex diagonal at each corner. So I'm just, I'm pleased to see that there's a special meeting and the director has, has realized. I, I probably have five calls a day of, of people looking for housing, whether it's low-income or not low-income. Either way, there's, there's a problem on, on both sides. And with my development, I'm thinking it would open up to even older folks that want to move out of their big home. And that opens up a home for some of the wanting to move into the community of something not so small. So I'm just wanting to say, I'm really pleased that we're having a special meeting that's, that's totally focused on this. And if we can prioritize it, prioritize it and, and try to make something happen, it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission, Justin Hawkins from Hayfork. So I, of course, read through the element update, and, you know, it kind of struck me early on, but then I realized pretty quickly in the document, within like a first half, for sure, they never mention cannabis. Now, I know that's all I ever talk about up here. I do think about other things occasionally, but literally, it's not in here. Now, I know that the feds don't approve of things like that, but this is SB two, which is a state funding mechanism. So I might, might be tied back to federal funds somehow, but really, we should be honest about it. The document says we have one hundred and twenty-three farm workers in this county. So I think there's more of my sub watershed. And it just allows for skewed data, okay? We're not capturing a lot of information here. And so, while that's a concern, I think, you know, the point I brought up about Class K housing, I thought I should go with four point one, Program four point one. I think we should replace the old four point four, basically, if you looked at the previous element. We should just go ahead and say Class K, and let's skip the amnesty thing here, okay? Because that can come later. But if we commit to a Class K here, this is where we can get it. In fact, that was what was told us to do a couple of years ago. Is that we were told to wait till the housing element. So we're, we're here. This is our chance, I suggest we do it. I, I beg you to do it, not for me, but for literally the only way to get housing into the system right now is through this process. I read the whole document. There's almost no mechanisms in here to get more housing into our system. There really don't suggest anything revolutionary in this document. And so I think that we can bring more unpermitted structures into fold somehow with the work the commission's already done. It's a win-win for everybody. And I know that the, the RHA is a duplex, basically, right? But we can do better in this community, for sure. Real quickly, I'd almost like to see, and I don't know where it would go, but I think we should focus on internet utilities in this county. It's under the dry utilities section. But literally, that's what's stopping development in this county, is the lack of internet. Because like, like, we need it today, right now. My kids need it for homeschooling because, you know, that's how you get things done nowadays, you can't go to school. We have to have more utilities. And I would suggest we have to pursue the fiber optic networks that are going through the county. It's referenced in the document here, but we never actually went after it. They're going to go all the way to hoopla, they're going to skip us if we don't step up. So it takes the board of supervisors to get involved, but you guys can put it in there so they have to deal with it, hopefully. And just all that, on the at-risk multifamily situation, yeah, I think they've expired because it goes with the term of whatever the loan is. And so my suggestion is like, I ran the numbers, I looked at it. It's going to be like seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars a door in income. You can't buy the units for that much and actually pay for it. You'd have to have such equity in the place to make it work. We have to find a different solution, because that's not reasonable to developers. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak on the housing element? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak on the housing element?
Yes, yes. John Rowland from Johnson.
All right, go ahead.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Horr's previous comments about the commercial cannabis program. Really, one of the, one of the intended consequences, or I guess intended consequences of our program was to bring unpermitted housing into permitted status. There's been a great deal of that for the last three-plus years. It would be great to have a vision somewhere in the document, and one additional benefit to our program. And I think it's done a great job of taking old buildings falling down cabins and replacing them or updating them with new permitted safe houses.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, I guess I'll bring it back to the commission, and because it's easier to see, I'll start with you, Commissioner Horr. Do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have several pages noted that I'd like to briefly review.
Okay, to make it easier to follow along, you want to start at the front of where you're going, and we'll work from there?
Yes, in fact, I do have some references to the document itself, but I also have questions in terms of some things that are referenced. For example, just to start abruptly, and it's more like seeking information on these, for example, like the broadband 299 corridor that Mr. Hawkins brought up earlier. I charted this in my notes, and I'm curious as to where that process is. I know there was, there has been a lot of talk of this last year, and it was in the newspapers, and everyone was making a push for it. I'm curious as to where this stands, and where this process stands construction-wise. How is this being implemented at a local level here in Trinity County? Are we being passed up? Are there some lateral connections being made from this broadband connection, et cetera, et cetera? If staff can advise on this, or inform us, please?
I can't. It's not really directly related to the housing element. But I can say it's been held up. It's not out of the books, but it has been held up. And there's been, filings made that have held up the process.
Okay, very well. Thank you, Director. Also, ADUs, additional dwelling units. I did read in certain sections that it is encouraged that the county participates more broadly in these, perhaps advertising these more openly. Director Hunter, do you think the effort that the county has put forth in facilitating this is sufficient? Do you think there's any areas we need to improve? Is there further advertisement that needs to take place regarding this? Your perception on this, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. And one of the components of our SB2 grant, that $160,000 I'm so excited about, is to, yeah, redo our ADU ordinance. It is out of compliance. There have been two updates. And so, right now, we're defaulting to state law because our ordinance is so obsolete. And so, we need to update the ordinance and definitely get word out. It's just an amazing, very appropriate housing option for folks in Trinity County. We see probably that's where most of our affordable housing is coming in at this time, actually, is accessory dwelling units. So if folks don't know, accessory dwelling units are allowed by right in any area where you can have residential use by right. So like TPZ Timber Production Zone, no, you have to get a use permit for a house. That's not allowed by right. But agricultural zone, residential, that's an allowed by right use. You can have up to 1,200 square foot detached unit, and you can also have an detached unit. And housing element laws have even made it, removed barriers to, basically, wherever you are, the county has to work with you if you want ADU accessory dwelling unit. If you want to convert a garage, and it's in setback, you know, where usually you wouldn't be able to have new development, doesn't matter. State law says it's okay, you convert that garage, you're fine. So I think the barriers to ADU development have just been lessened every passing year with the legislation coming out of Sacramento. So, yeah, that, we need to have more information on our website, and reach out more, and get that ADU ordinance amended to be updated and to reflect what Trinity County wants to see in their ADU ordinance and more options. So, yeah, fantastic. Commissioner Horr.
I'm now referring to the documents themselves. I do have a question on page 33, or 32, significance of finding someone to purchase or replace these expired Assistant Living Units. But now, in relation to these possibly being expired, I don't know if the point is mute or the question is mute. So I'm not sure if these, I think it's 64 units that are potential, or 62 units that are potentially to be expired.
Yeah.
So I guess I'll leave that at that, because if they're expired, I guess it, you know. Moving on, I do have another question, and that's on page 36. And it, I think it relates directly to Mr. Dana Ryan's property on the Ransom Road. It says here in the document, says, "However, the county is presently collaborating with Rural Community Housing Development Corporation to bring a new affordable housing complex to Weaverville. The project will be located at 161 Ransom Road, APN 02451002." Is, how plausible is this? Is this actually in the process, or is it? I tried to reach out to this, the Rural Community Housing Development out of Ukiah, I believe they are, but I got no response, I assume, this week with everything going on, or, you know, probably furloughed or working at home, I don't know. Could you inform me, or?
Absolutely, absolutely. There was, prior to recent developments, the project was going to be located on another multifamily zone parcel, R3 zone parcel, not too far from the library, as a matter of fact. However, there were site constraints on that parcel. And so, we were looking for another parcel that would be a good candidate. And I've spoken with Mr. Ryan several times, and we had discussions about possible rezon to the R3. It's currently zoned R1, single-family residential. And so, when the site one, you know, did not work out, the focus has, yeah, been on the Ransom Road side. So, you know, there's a lot of factors involved, you know, but as Mr. Ryan indicated, this is a parcel that has a lot of potential for affordable housing development.
Excellent. And one last comment I want to make, and it's, I don't know, this is, it is somewhat tied to the housing element. It's the issue of subdivisions. I know it's been difficult to sync subdivisions in the county, and it is referenced in page 51, Comments Made by County Engineer and Defense, that there's discrepancies between the subdivision ordinance and the CAL FIRE fire safety ordinance, and how those are, they don't quite overlap or sync correctly. So sometimes, certain properties are required to observe the CAME ordinance, while others are required to observe the CAL FIRE ordinance, and there's just a lack of syncing in that, and it's making some subdivisions, and even encroachment permits difficult to obtain, or many months have gone by, and there seems to be no solution or no compromise into moving these forward. So, and so basically, based on that, my question was, any possibility of the Planning Commission's Subdivision Committee at some point taking effect or being introduced to perhaps facilitate this, or, you know, liaison between the two agencies to try to collaborate better? So essentially, that's my question.
Yeah, there's a few things there. Number one, we need to update our subdivision ordinance. We also need to update the county fire state regulate, fire regulations, because similar to the ADU ordinance, our fire safety regulations, there have been two updates. So a lot of updates to do, which would also help with consistency, hopefully, at least a step in the right direction. So, yeah, the subdivision ordinance, if we, after reviewing recent projects, have realized there's several things that could be updated and make life easier, especially for simple subdivisions, just even, you know, a parcel map, creating a couple extra parcels for home sites, you know, in the appropriate areas would be very helpful. So that's one thing. And yes, the subdivision review committee, definitely need to reinstate that. And it's on the list, and we do have help coming soon. I'm afraid to make any promises right now. But we do have a new deputy director of planning coming on in April, and they're focused on strictly planning. And, which was supposed to be mine, actually. We know how that goes. But, yeah, so at that time, I think with that, you know, assistant sort of planning, experienced planner coming in, that that would be a good time to get that reinitiated. Very needed.
Thank you very much, Director. Okay, Commissioners Stewart or McHugh, do you guys have any questions or anything to add, or?
No, I think so. I do not.
Okay.
And I only, that's my one concern.
Okay. Well, continuing on then, I, well, I've only, I actually did have questions also of the K housing, whether or not we should try to include that in this, after we've been advised it should be in the housing element, and then later advised it shouldn't be in the housing element. John would like to have some input from fellow commissioners on that, whether we should put that into the programs in this, or not. So I think we could have a motion proposed by someone that they would so desire, or not to go from here.
A motion? Are you asking for a motion to include testing, or for the whole thing?
That could go either way with me. I think if we do, I think if we're going to have a motion to include Class K, it should be as part of the motion to adopt the addendum, and then add that as an amendment.
I believe it's difficult to include. I would like to see Class K mentioned in the document as a possible alternative to make it as, include it as an option without really having an ordinance or something more tangible to grasp to, to reference to. I see it kind of being a little difficult, but I would like to see it mentioned in the document as a possible option and a possible solution to the housing crisis that we have here in the county.
Yeah, one thing I have, if we try to add and then tie Class K ordinance to this housing document, I don't think we're going to be able to use addendum and negative.
Nor would that be appropriate.
Because it's going to be a major change to our, to our housing element.
Now, amending one of the programs to, you know, discuss further, you know, further investigation, and for the planning department, you work with, you know, planning and building departments to work on identifying process for Class K housing, possibly? Some language in the program?
Yeah, Program 4.1 seems the most appropriate one. Yes, I'd like to see that referenced, and then allocate some funds to investigate this more in detail, and see if some compromise or solutions tailored in that direction can be presented. Yes.
I agree. And my fear is that if it is not entered someplace in the housing element, that it will be five years more, because we've been talking about this for years, and it'll be another five years before anything is done.
I must add, you share your concern there. So would anybody care to make a motion to, do you have this all figured out, Commissioner?
I don't have the agenda, actually, so.
This is the agenda, but that's just.
Sheriff Fraser, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I do want to, again, emphasize the importance of moving this document forward. So could receive direction, but still moving it forward to add, address the need to add Class K and Program 4.1, but still move forward to the board.
I would say that would be the thing, if we could, and if anybody, does anybody have any other concerns on the commission that we believe need to be addressed with this? I mean, any glaring?
I would, yes, sir. I agree with what I think Commissioner Horr was saying, that it has to be an ordinance that fills out with Class K. By the way, Class K is a global name, way of turning the building code, perhaps, whatever it should be called. But I think anything that goes beyond exploring applications, alternatives, building codes to the county at this point, it's true, because we've not adopted that code in the county in a way that would allow a program to actually be as close to you for this. So I think anything going beyond exploring it, or, you know, some wording like that, and having some actual ordinance to override Class K housing in the county, may affect it, scroll down, getting it passed by appropriate panelists at the next level up in the county.
Yes, okay. And I think I understand. I think that's kind of where we were going, because anything beyond that also would require further environmental review. So I think we're all on the same page.
Now, just a clarification, like, the motion would be to recommend to the Board of Supervisors the adoption? Is that correct, or? Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes, I will go forth and make a motion. I make a motion to, one, adopt the addendum to the 2016 Housing Element Negative Declaration and Direct Staff to file a notice of determination with the Trinity County Clerk, and adopt the resolution, approve and general amendment DEV 20-01 for the sixth cycle, 2019, 2014. Did I read 2024?
2024, yes.
2019, 2024, Housing Element Update. With amending to include in section, in Program 4.1, the opportunity for the county to further explore what is allowed by state and called limited density owner-built rural dwelling. And lastly, to direct staff to submit adopted 2019, 2024 Housing Element to the Department of Housing and Community Development for final certification and filing.
Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
No, I have a minute.
Okay, we're going to, this is a resolution anyway, so it'll be roll call vote, but I'm going to ask Commissioners- Stewart and Commissioners McHugh to tell us your name also before you say aye, because there are others on the phone at this time also, possibly. So as your name's called, say, yes, this is Commissioner McHugh, and then your vote, please, or Commissioner Stewart.
Commissioner Stewart? How do you vote? Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Stewart, how do you vote?
This is Commissioner Diana Stewart, and I vote aye.
Commissioner McHugh, how do you vote?
This is Commissioner McHugh, and I vote aye.
Commissioner Hord, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair, Mr. Fraser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews is absent.
Okay. The resolution is passed by Hord, so you'll vote. And I believe with that, is there any other matters from staff that we need to address? Or shall we adjourn?
We did have to announce.
Okay. I believe that at this point, we can announce that we will not be having a meeting on the 26th. It looks like we're going to be under the same constraints we are now, and there's too much stuff going on at that meeting to try to do it without public comment. And so we will cancel the meeting for the 26th and hope that those items can be continued to the 9th, correct?
At this time, yes, at this time, they continue those items to the 9th. Again, we don't know what's going to happen on the 9th. Governor just issued a shelter in place for the entire state. So we will take it as it comes and do what we can, yes. But we'd like to, at this point, continue those items specifically to the April 9th meeting.
Okay, so we will do that. We will continue all the items from March 26th to April 9th, pending any further development. So with that, we will be adjourned at 8:12 PM. And where does that thing go?